I really don't know.
Oh, for Bobby's friend that's wanting to drop. What do you say?
What he asked you for.
For sure.
I think more need to say that. I mean, I just. The person today, first thing that we'll need to do is approve the agenda. Been moved and segmented to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye. The motion carries. On the comment section. Um, we'll open up public comments. Uh, time to decide for the public comments on county business topics. One gender issue, if the comment is. Or not on the agenda, please understand the board supervisors will not act on your comments. This meeting due to the making law requirements, but may do some of future work. Meeting may place it on the agenda. The chair and welcome comments from the public. Comments must be brought to the board and not others in attendance. Keep your comments to remain and it's not appropriate to use profane obscene slanderous language. No personal attacks will be allowed. The chair may limit each speaker to three minutes having read through that. Anybody wish to speak?
Anyways, Chris Moore, I live in Garwick and I am here today to um. Talk about the topic that I want kind of doing around about me. Um, I um am an educator, been in education for over thirty years. So I like to think about things from that perspective. I've been a substitute, a parent. I've worked at a study. I've been in classroom and as well as teacher. So most of my experience is bringing things down to kids. So I guess I'm going to ask us to be a part of this. And I have a student and his name's Billy. Billy comes to my classroom, he walks in and I say to Billy. Billy, you can no longer be in my classroom, you have to leave now. And I turn around and I walk away. Billy is standing there confused, he's heard, he has no clue why I'm telling him he can't be in my room. I have not provided him with any evidence, I've not communicated with him. I have failed him as a teacher. I have not shown him how he's been doing in class. I've not shown him his test or his daily grade. I have not even worked with him to show him that he is doing things wrong. I failed him as a teacher. So with that being said, I was lightly dressed since I had a little gray sash. He came to the meeting last week. He had seen on the agenda that one of the um zoning committee members you were speaking to remove. He had no clue who it was. He asked who it was. And he did not know until someone handed him a piece of paper telling him it was him. He was being removed. You failed Craig Sash in my opinion. He had no evidence of why he was being removed. No communication to him that he was going to be removed. So in my opinion, you would be like me in that scenario of being in that classroom. I failed that student, you failed Craig Sash. So I would ask that he be reinstated back onto the zoning committee.
Thank you. Hey, Abigail, would you just speak? The other public comments.
I have one. Welcome back all five supervisors. It looks good to see five people, you know, five chairs.
Thank you. That's not good anymore.
Yeah, yeah, but then there's that Turner guy.
Alright, we'll close with the comments. You'll have a opportunity to speak at the end. If you so desire. Uh, next thing we need to do is discuss and approve six nine twenty-five regular minutes.
Still moved.
The move.
Second.
Seconded discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Uh, Ben, road report.
Um, so we're working on, I mentioned that three hundred boy street bridge, um, they're. Um, and then we're working on that reviate on K Avenue, just north of shop on two seventieth. We should have that open. Today, we're gonna get, get that rock before the rain comes here. Um, and then we are working on during our stadium, uh, to stop down here. Uh, cleaning up the ditch, reshaping the road there, east of H. Um, and then doing some spray patching this week. Doing T fifty-five and then we'll kind of move to other, other roads as well. Um, and this Tuesday, we got living, um, bird paving, um, on E sixty-six. Uh, next week, I'll kind of have a better idea what bids we got and kind of compare to, to our estimate. So I'm hoping to have some good bids and we'll see if they end up coming this fall or. The late start date for that project will be next, next year or so. They could either try to get it done this year or wait till next. Um, and then. Just gonna. Have offered the position to Lane Hess, um, from the delivery area for the bridge crew laborer position. Um, the start date would be June twenty-third. Um, and starting wage would be twenty-six, uh, twenty-nine via the, the contract. For utility number one, so.
Twenty-six, twenty-nine.
Twenty, yeah, twenty-six and twenty-nine.
Any questions for Ben? Appreciate, uh, any, any updates on the road? Or no, I think we got that figured out.
Sorry. Clear.
Yep, uh, there was semi-traffic that was going up and west of town is now going up and going east of town. Uh, from the border and. Yep, over to T forty-seven.
Yep.
Okay, winter painter, you guys will be out later today.
Yeah.
There's some rough stuff.
Yeah.
Cedar Rapids is really rough, an awesome spot. They're out of mine last weekend, do a good job on that. Okay.
Um, we need a motion. Need a loose.
Need, need a motion to, um, hire Lane Hess. Um, starting date would be six twenty-three, at a, is that right? Six twenty-three.
Yep.
At rate of twenty-six, twenty-nine per hour.
So moved.
I'll second.
The movement seconded, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carries. Him in the favor. Thank you, guys. Have a good week. Okay, discussion. In mental health recovery, as I have highlighted, a lot of need in the mental health services area. We're very low or resource poor. Um, when it comes to mental health services here in Tama County. Uh, particularly with, uh, the now vacation of, uh, services by center associates. They've moved three full-time, well, three therapists that were here at least three to, three days a week. Um, seeing people and so we're trying to fill that gap. Um, I've invited together weekend, who I work with in Marshalltown, uh, to come. They have also been, they've reached out to, um, Prairie Ridge, who also has an office here in town. Uh, to talk about providing services and so. Um, I'm, I know, but could you just introduce yourself for the group and kind of tell a little bit about what you guys do?
I'm Becky Brown, I'm Deb Williams. We're both peer support specialists. Um, we, both people, I have a previous offer flow experience. So we're not exactly the same as counselors, we're not counselors, we just, it was people problems and trying to help them. We're, we're the only one that's not a class. Um, we offer many different classes that are multiple questions and then we have like one-hour classes. And we can do one-on-one peer support. So maybe it is like they can do it in fifteen-minute increments. And I. We plan on coming hopefully like one afternoon or morning to afternoon a week. And using Prairie Ridge's facilities because they said that we could. We just don't have the day yet in mind, but. Thanks, Ben. Not experienced.
And so we, we are state certified peer support specialist, which means that we have recovery experience ourselves. We go to forty-hour class. We take their test, we do five hundred hours of, of an internship before we need to take the state test. Pass the state test because state certified peer support specialist. We have twenty hours every two months, or twenty CEUs every two years that we have to do to keep our certificate. We are certificate, we're not licensed. Like you said, we use our experience and experience views from helping other people to help other people. We deal with the general now, that's, that's our main thing. Um, I've been doing this for over twenty years. Up and, up and on, um, it's been doing that up and on for about ten years. Um, we understand the work of the education, why everything is classes. We can do those in a classic setting, we can do those in a one-on-one setting if somebody wants. Um, you know, big thing is mental health education. Trying to teach them the tools that they need to get through the day. Their words are their goal and that's what our objective is to get them through whatever their goal. And to keep them well, where they won't get them to go through all their crisis all the time. Give them the skill or give them the, the knowledge to stay well. And that's what our main goal is to. Well, we've been there, we know it's like, oh, we're not well and it's no fun. So our goal is to keep people well.
Absolutely, and, and that you guys are here is just a testament to your, how far you've come. Uh, you're not, uh, by nature, well, I remember I was from there. Starting from Marshalltown. And, uh, they've even come a long way from giving public presentations because one of the things that's not easy for all of us is to get up in front of public and talk. And so you guys are doing fantastic work. We look forward to partnering with you here in Tama County to bring some of those services. As we know, rural Iowa is struggling with mental health services to a degree that we've never seen before. And some peer support specialists all over the country are being used now in a capacity that, especially in rural, rural America, uh, where there are a lack of services. So we do appreciate this, uh, the endeavor in your ability and willingness to partner with us to try to fill some gaps.
Uh, we also go to the, the wellness centers in Gurnell and Newton. So where you said the outreach.
Yep.
Centers, we, you know, we're there for an hour doing whatever there, but here we plan on, like she said, we plan on. Giving, giving that afternoon. Putting on the need.
Yep, that's very generous. We are very thankful to have your services to come to Tama County.
Well, and all our services are free, we don't charge. Um, if, I mean, I'm gonna be honest, if we do set somebody to go through whatever classes, they're like eight, nine sessions. Uh, and they're on Medicaid, we will ask them if we can build a Medicaid company. That's how we get our plan. But there are no, absolutely no cost to anybody for what, what we do.
Very good.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Um. What you guys are doing is fantastic. Uh, our nation is very short-sighted in dealing with mental health and it started back in the seventies. Um, and I think it's, it's disgusting how far down we have gone in taking care of people. To the point where the normal solution is putting them in jail. And that's, that is.
And I started when there was nothing, there was nothing in Marshalltown in nineteen eighty, there was nothing. I don't know where to go and find, even see anybody who was dealing with mental health if you had help. That's why I got into it, well, as soon as I got healthy. And then I found a mentor that helped me get healthy enough. But makes me want to help others. I don't want them to go through the twenty years of crap and torture. Let's get them now and let's. They're like what they want.
Absolutely, coming from a provider perspective, you guys bring a different perspective with lived experience. They've been through it, they've been through some of the struggles of mental health and, and challenges to the system. That's why I think that it's really awesome that you guys come in from a public policy perspective. We can kind of have an impact on what goes on in our county, not necessarily the state, but we can certainly add for that, so. So we do appreciate it.
Thank you, girls.
Yeah, I'll echo all those comments. Thank you guys for the courage, for perseverance. You guys done a good job and offering it free is probably a really good thing because if you're in a mental health crisis, money, you're gonna be like, oh, I don't want to do that because it's gonna cost money. So it's a really cool opportunity for people to take advantage of and, and really appreciate what you guys do.
And when, you know, if we start something here and they want us to work, um, they, we have an office in Marshalltown.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, that's great.
We do mostly scheduled peer support, but there's walking times and we don't turn anybody over back or, you know. If we're in the middle of something, that's why there's toilets. We're in the middle of something, one can handle whatever it is and then the person, the gentleman can handle whoever comes in. This type of place, so.
People could get ahold of you on the back of this pamphlet, we'll make that information available to the public. Um, could you guys just highlight, because I think you're selling yourself short on your training, the Wellness Recovery Action. And when you say go through the. And then also.
It does cost a little bit, but we were able to get, uh, say, let's say, uh.
Grant or something?
Well.
Into regional funding, or no, you turned the, you either way, did it?
From the peer school company or. From the peer network. No, they, um, oh, okay. But I'm not sure where she's going there, but I'm sorry. Um, peer recovery, the, the RAP stands for Peer Recovery Action Plan. Um. We have peer recovery, wellness recovery action plan. What that is, is you're gonna learn what it takes to stay well. And then you're gonna realize what, you're gonna about yourself, but we're gonna. And then we're gonna plan. So when you realize that's happening, you can go to here and say, hey, this is what works before, let's get back onto this. But that's what the Wellness Action Plan is. It has been around for a long time, um, it works. Uh, I use it, you've taught other people to use it. Um, it's not a one-hour class, just sort of like ten sessions. I mean, we, we can do it in one-hour increments, but it's usually set up for like a three-day, a three-day session, eight hours a day. Um. A lot of people use it, not even just for mental health, I mean, some people use it for work. Um, some people use it for school, this is where I want to be. And, um. But you really get to know yourself when you're doing this and that's the main thing. You learn about yourself, you learn what you're like, you're learning what you need. And you say. You guys know, but if you're in crisis, you're not gonna be thinking, oh yeah, what do I have in my RAP book? When I can just go, okay, here's my RAP book, let's go here. That's the big thing, you are gonna leave what they book. That says what to do and what I'm like, because sometimes people just need a reminder of when I'm like, well, well. In fact, I honestly, I asked my mom when I was like, I really went when I first did like, that's something you don't think about. But it makes you think of a lot of things of, you know, what makes me just stay well? What, what, what are the resources do I have to stay well? Um, what, what are things that work for me? You know, you make a list of skills, coping skills, recovery skills. That say, hey, I'm having a bad day, but maybe I need to do this. One of them is you do make a daily maintenance plan, which means you write down everything you know you need to do each day. And you're not having a day or something, you have to go back, oh, yeah, I forgot to do this today. Where you may not have been in the mind to do that in your mind, but it's all about the conflict. And it's just a tool to go back, bring back to where you want to be, that.
But honestly, not that sense, but our training portal was we took a three-day. Um, seminar and then the next month to, um, you have facilitator, you have to do the first seminar. And then the second part of it is five days and it's eight hours a day. And then if you pass that, you get a certificate saying that you're a RAP facilitator.
That we're, we're trying to help other people. The first one is to sell us what, what the RAP plan is, the second one is how to teach. It, it does cost. I mean, we're lucky enough to see that the state came through, gave us funding to go to Cedar Rapids. You get in the group, you're gonna have two books. You're gonna have a workbook and you're gonna have a rap book. Uh, that's where most of the cost comes from. And then. Have, um. Notebooks will be with papers and then we'll do some papers and then we'll do a lot of that out. It's not a cheap thing, but it's something that we still will not charge for. We'll figure something later. There's also gear too. We have one gear toward, uh, social speakers. Um, and mental health. You can do it with the belt man that's disabled, for the elderly, um, it is. It's separate gears. It's the same system, but it is for.
Very good. Well, thank you so much for sharing. And, uh, I just, I thought that that was, uh, important when the Highlands, very intensive training. And, uh, if you're looking for something that's just certification, you can get certified with a pen to think of just a couple of days, but.
Yeah, even that, we have to get re-certified every two years. Got, got shit to do that.
Yep, well, good luck with that. If there's ever any need, um, for our Tampa County residents to offset some of the costs for the workbooks and that kind of stuff, please come back. We'll keep in communication as, as we move forward and make those services available to others. We don't want any barriers as far as like trying to get people some help.
Yeah, it's just getting the word out and getting them to come through those doors. That's the, the main thing. Um, if you know anywhere you'd like us to go to make to meet them or talk to somebody or you would. To do that. I mean, we're on.
Amen. Well, thank you so much.
Thank, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mind if we go? So we have to.
Yes, thank you. I, I thought we better grab them up before some other counties get them. They only have four days a week. They're already in three different counties. Uh, next discussion, possible action to have board chairman sign cost advisory F Y twenty-five certification statement. This is a email that came in multiple, uh, we have a lot of attachments, uh, from Karen. You want to explain a little bit?
So, um, every year, um, this place, um, does this allocation plan for us, um, will fund that is received by DHS. And so it's a very comprehensive plan that is on the web. I didn't put it out because it was eight and four pages long, but.
But the cost, how much it costs us to buy DHS services or how much it costs DHS to supply their services in Tampa County?
I have to go back.
Okay, I did, was it a site forty thousand dollars or something like that?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Fifty, fifty something, I thought. There you go.
How soon do we have to sign this thing if we're gonna sign it?
Um, the sooner the better. They like to have it signed and then they like to be paid. So then it works in your hands also.
Well, I, I guess my question is, I, I, I look at it and I believe I've stolen receipts. Uh, there's an awful lot of data there, but do we even use it? Is this the first, I, it's the first I've ever seen it.
We've done it for years, so I don't know the history of why it's done or anything like that, but.
I, I would like a little more time for us to, to walk through and find out. Is it truly valuable? I mean, we've been doing it. Is it just like in a file somewhere?
Yes, and probably ask me then because they try to.
My understanding from when I would help Laura do the reporting before, I think they got a lot of information.
Yep, feel more time. I think we can table it for a week.
Yeah, I, I, I would like to look through it. I hate spending money with, because we've always done it that way. So, I, I make most of the table it for, I put it on next Monday's agenda.
Okay. The move?
I'll second it.
Second it. Um, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Motion carries. We'll table that until next week. Next, uh, employee recognition for Dirk Henley is in the back there. I saw you driving away. I'm glad you came back. I had pulled that head B here by somebody. It's, it's for outstanding service. Now, this didn't cost the county anything. I bought this out of my own pocket. Dirk, why are you coming forward? I'm gonna hook it up appreciation. Say from our whole board, but really it's great. Was it?
You want a picture?
Sure, absolutely. Well, thank you very much. There will be, there will, there will be payback for this. Yeah, that, that was.
I hope you didn't just jinx it either because so far it's working.
So far, so good. We, we do appreciate your services and, uh, it saves us from having to bring somebody in and. And, uh, thank you for your willingness to go out of your way to help us. Part of the job. That's all you, that's what you always say, but it's, it's above and beyond. We, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you this.
All right, uh, discussion, possible action to appoint Hope Hicks to the Norman Andrews Public Library. This probably came from a recommendation from the board.
So the library board or library director contacted me and said, Donna Wilson, her position had been vacated and they. Found Hope Hicks to take her spots if they need you guys to approve for being on the board.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Move and seconded discussion? Any of those in favor say aye? Discussion, possible action to accept Nikki no resignation from the Board of Adjustment. Uh, the only question I had, there were two that came through.
Yep, so one, it made it sound like she was just giving up her, um, the vice chair spot that she's actually giving up the whole.
Okay.
On the.
Okay.
That's why the second one.
Okay. I didn't see the, the difference. I saw that it was worded a little bit differently, but pretty good. So the one that we're going to act on is the second. That came through. That's the final version. So. We'll need a motion to, to.
I'll accept that. I make it mostly we accept this. Um, she's done a great work for us. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, discussion, possible action to improve appointment of Nancy Smith to the Board of Adjustment, understanding that there's a board, uh, of adjustment hearing coming up tomorrow. And to put them in the best position to have a fair, uh. Should say that they want five members for this meeting. Uh, we had already posted this, uh, for other adj-, Board of Adjustment openings. And so as it came up as a surprise, we were able to, uh, pull from the list. So like, soon I come.
The trains are coming.
So anyhow, uh, Nancy had applied. There was another application as well that wasn't available. Uh, but we put availability down. Um, or excuse me, we asked for their availability. The first, uh, first option for availability for the other person. Um, was July first and Nancy's was anytime. And so we discussed with each, uh, discussed with Heather. We ran it by Paul. Our H R person and, and, uh, they, he said that, uh, we get more than that plus an appointment. And so that's. I would entertain a motion for the appointment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded discussion.
I'll just add, and it was posted, the job was for ten days. The volunteer board position was open, so we meet veterans preference, all those kind of things. It was out there. Available for ten full business days. Um, so that's, that's a good thing too. I think we were past. That date as well. And kind of like Mark said, the ordinance says you shall appoint. I know in the past there was issues of. You know, let's just leave it at three or four. Well, you shall, you have to. It means you must. So that's why we're appointing someone today due to the resignation.
Yep, uh, Iowa legislature has passed, how many people are on what boards and for how long those appointments. Are. And so we have to comply with the state law by doing this. This is falling in, in that compliance. Okay, been moved seconded, uh, any discussion? Motion carries. Uh, next discussion, possible, I'm sorry, set public hearing date for, uh, Craig Sash, uh, last, last week, we. Passed an ordinance, or excuse me, a resolution, uh, including a removal order from, uh, Craig from the, uh, Tampa County. Zoning Board. Um, within that, uh, resolution allows for a public hearing to be exact. Or, or Craig to be able to, um, put on the record, uh, his comments. Um, Craig had asked, uh, or made a, in writing, a, uh, request for an appeal. We just need to be clear that this isn't an appeal. But it is a public hearing, uh, where he can come and have his, his, uh, opinions stated. Um. And so I guess at this time we'll. We can set that public hearing date, uh, you can give some. Um, I had talked to Karen last week and, uh, thought that June thirtieth might work if, if that would work for you. Shouldn't. Um. So we would entertain a motion to set that public hearing, um, and understand that the public hearing, um. Does, does not fall under the requirements of having to be posted in the newspaper and those kind of things. It's just labeled a public hearing.
I assume it'll be on the agenda.
It will be on the agenda.
I, I moved, we set the public hearing for Craig Sash, like, six thirty. So do, do, do we need to?
Do thirty.
Time, you know, thirty?
No, it can just be in the agenda.
Okay, maybe the gym and I. And you seconded this second?
Yep, certainly if he could be here for the beginning of the meeting or we could put it at the first thing if that works for you.
Okay.
Alrighty, it's been, uh, moved and seconded any discussion? Here are those who say aye. Motion carries, uh, public hearing date for Craig will be, uh, June thirty. Discussion, possible action on hiring freeze exemptions, nothing. Um. We only have to do that two more times, baby. Um, we're gonna round out the year fine. Uh, discussion.
Claims in the amount of one eight eight comma zero eight one period three zero. Make a motion that we approve the claims in that amount.
Okay, it's been moved second to approve and pay the claims in that amount. Any discussion? Here are none of those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The motion carries. Um. Second shot at, uh, public comments. Anybody from the public wish to speak? Karen?
Years of service, it's a lot of work to get to all the meetings that the person has to go to. Nobody knows. How many meetings here and everywhere else that. Active members, especially active board members. Like. We've all been through a lot of stuff in the last. Four years and. Recognizing all of. Personal difficulties you've done here at the hall. Keep us going. Thank you. And Dirk.
I would echo that with Nikki though. She did a really good job on that board and we appreciate her work that she did over the last few years.
Good, good. I just want to comment and thank Nancy for being willing to go on the Board of Adjustment at this time in town. So. And I also want to comment, uh, I'm on the dice, Public Library. I appreciate having Hope being willing to go on there. She will be an excellent admission to our board. High school librarian, piano school librarian, right? That's one of those. You have somebody like that come on and you just sit back and say, okay, I'll shoot.
I just wonder who is going to be appointed to, um, supervise Jim while Nancy is avoiding all of her time for all the meetings that are gonna be. We should probably take.
Are you raising your hand for that Karen? Is it you? Is that what you?
Well, you might just love to meet me at the board meeting. I might be there in the audience.
Yeah. That ain't our problem. She married him, should.
She put up with a lot now. I was now, nowadays she doesn't give him much care. We, she was complaining about it. So I think, well, what'd she do for me yesterday? Well, we can only come up with one or two things that she did in the middle of the day, so.
Yeah, not what you can do for your. Anybody else wish to speak? Anything? Close by the comments and we will adjourn the meeting at nine oh seventy.